Hey. Follow the meeting to order at 4:30. We have the regular meeting minutes, March 15th.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Special meeting minutes of March 31st. Erica was not there.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Okay. Local traffic authority. That was approached by Jamie's son about the note, well, the stretch of road between where 61 and 60, 61, 63, up to just about the Kepler's house. There's a concern because you come up, if you're heading southbound, you come up over Lowell and Knoll, and people tend to park over there because there's a trailhead at that location on the right side and on the left side. And there is one no parking sign along that stretch already. I did reach out to DOT to see if they'd consider doing a stretch of no parking from 61, 63 up to about where Jamie's driveway is. They're gonna do a field survey on it, get back to me. But we probably, there may be some approval from the local traffic authority at that time. Also spoke with Jeremiah Sazan about traffic issue in front of the school. People heading westbound on 109 tend to come around the corner near Benton Road quite quickly. And it's a real issue when the buses are trying to leave and people are just flying across there. So I also reached out to a different division of DOT. And they're gonna look into doing a probably a school zone area there, maybe a sign with a couple of lights on it like they do down in Thomaston. Just to let people be aware of, you know, a school zones ahead. So they're supposed to go back to us on that. Any questions? Community health generator. We looked at this a while back. And the original contractor we approved could not do the job. So we did have two other quotes. One was from Eagle, one was from Tower. The original quotes were frontline electric was $22,760. Eagle was $35,656. Tower is $39,522. I reached out to Eagle since they're next lowest bidder. Given the, all the issues with supply chain and inflation and everything going up, I asked them if they'd look at their quote again. They did. They came back with a $36,788, which is about 11, it's $1,143 more than the previous quote, which is pretty good. It is a different sized generator. The first generator, they put a little large for what we need here at the town hall. I kind of figured that Tower probably will not go down in price. And so they're already higher for the same size generator. What are your feelings? You want to move with Eagle?
Now Eagle was the second bidder, but first I'm around.
Second lowest.
I'm fine to go with Eagle.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, because of the supply chain issues, we're looking up to a 28 week wait.
So whatever happens to the generator for a school?
School, we've been working on that recently. I have met with a couple of engineers. We went over and looked at the electrical and the boiler room there. We looked at the kitchen. And he's supposed to be getting back to me with.
So that's still on target?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to get, again, if we can get the generator, I'd like to get it done this summer.
Right.
The plan is now is, yeah, the fuel tank for the school on this side of the building is sitting on a concrete pad, which is deteriorating. The school would like to replace that pad. Want to do all in one because that's where the generator would go off. So we want to make the pad big enough to take not only the tank, but the generator too.
Makes sense.
So they want to get that pad done this summer. I'm hoping the generator can get done this summer. So that's the plan. Still moving forward.
The only other question, Tom, the difference in price on this, where is that money coming from? Do we have it in the budget or?
It's in LoSIP.
Okay.
I applied for $40,000 back when we were first talking about doing this, and that's still there.
Okay.
So LoSIP is a grant from the state. It's for small capital improvement projects that the municipalities might do.
I'll make a motion to accept the Eagle Electric bid proposal.
Instead of the price of it.
Oh, yeah, 36,078. And Laurel, can you include the number? Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? I was so thank you. ARPA and the CSA shares. The ARPA committee did come out and ask that we move forward with, because of time restraints, strains. On two items, which we did the excavator, which should be coming in shortly. But the CSA shares have to be paid for and locked in quickly because their growing season starts. So I was wondering if we could move forward with the CSA shares. 3750?
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to go to have rule.
The owners did say that we can split up those shares many different ways depending on the need of the client. Could be split in half, could almost be quartered. Maybe one family takes the share one week and the next family takes the next share the next week. And there's a lot of different ways. In fact, he came in the office, what, yesterday? Very nice person. They bought down in Hickory Hurst, that way.
Well, right.
Yeah, that's where they were last year.
They were renting, I think, from True Love, and now they bought the land.
Oh, they did.
And the greenhouse is up, yeah.
And they pulled all their stuff out and then.
Yeah, continue here, Windbeam, but they also do.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that's good. He's very happy to be here. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
And ARPA, we do have the rest of the lists. I went to a public forum, got some feedback. And I believe if we maintain the list the way it is, numbers one through 11 could be funded at this time. Any thoughts?
Are we sending this to, what, are we voting on it?
That's up to the board selection also. This can be handled as any other federal or state grant, and this is a federal grant. If any federal state grant, if it doesn't cost the town, if the town doesn't have to expend any funds, this can be handled by board selectmen. If it does cost the town funds, additional funds, it would have to go to a town meeting and Board of Finance.
Yeah, I do have some thoughts. We had the public meeting and some people showed interest in three areas. And right from the start, I've been, you know, on board with those three areas. The library, friends and neighbors, and the congressional church. I looked at the line items here and the fire department was up to about $280,000. My thought was the air conditioning in the firehouse. You know, it's nice to have air conditioning, but I think that it's one area that could probably be sacrificed to spread that money around the other three that were looking for money.
Well, there's a lot more than three looking other.
No, no, but those, those were the three that showed interest at our public hearing. That actually came up.
There were more than three.
Historical Society did mention something.
So my thought is, is that we formed the committee to deal with this, and they spent a lot of time going over the list. I believe there were a number of them at the public forum. It's available by recording if they weren't there. I think if any changes are going to be made to it, it should go back to that committee.
Should go back to what?
The ARPA committee.
Okay. We could have them meet again.
I'd like to make that motion and to go back to the ARPA.
Based on the feedback.
Based on the feedback. I am a little, you know, it's a hard thing because if, you know, number 22 wasn't available to talk at that meeting, you know, I don't know that just the other, the people who showed up are the only people with interest or who spoke. But certainly a final review by the ARPA committee would be in order.
Okay.
And, and Tom, can you check on two things? Well, one thing anyway. And I don't know if I read this someplace, but any land purchased by the town of Morris has to go to a town meeting.
Yeah, the town would not be purchasing the property. So housing authority would be.
But we're purchasing that property for, through the town?
From what I understand, the housing authority would purchase it.
But we're paying out the money.
We're using our, the American Rescue Plan Act money.
So that money is in our account?
We, like I said, I think we have half the money right now, and the other half is due in June, I believe.
Right.
Okay.
I think the appropriate thing to do is to get it back to the committee that discussed it. Tom, I know you were at all those meetings. You were at all of them. I was not because I worked during that time, but that's the committee that came up with the list, and I'm guessing that's why people are here. And I think that they should go there, not to pass the buck, but, but that's where the thought came from. And we could speculate on why, or I could speculate that I wasn't there. So I don't.
Yeah, I know the committee, they met since October through March, looked at everything that was in front of them. And came up with this.
I think that's, that's a good idea, and I would recommend that everybody in this room come to those meetings and voice your opinion.
I think so.
Yeah. So we get a better idea of what people actually want in the town.
I think the one final meeting or value reevaluation or whatever would be appropriate. Maybe we can ask them, Tom, to meet at night so more people could attend.
Yeah, the biggest issue, and I'm sure the employees involved would probably be okay about it. This, we had a number of employees that were on that committee. The treasurer, senior center, or activities director, highway foreman. Is that locked on it?
There's something in the letter. And I think that it would also, and I, it's, I guess it's our decision if we decide to take it to a town meeting or vote on it. I would like the committee's input on how to do that too. I don't think it should be, if the, I think the ARPA committee meeting should decide how to move forward with that, whether it's the board of selectmen vote or a town vote. What that looks like.
I would like to see a town vote myself.
I would too.
Just a vote yes or no on an item, not a discussion, because you'd be there all night.
Yeah, I think the question should be prepared in advance. And do you approve the, whatever they come up with?
Yep.
Do you approve the ARPA committee's proposal?
Right.
I see a couple, every town's doing it different. I see a couple of towns are having town meetings, and it's just yes or no on the item.
The whole package.
Because there'll just be a.
One at a time, yes or no.
Okay. Well, we'll set up another meeting with the committee then. Was that a motion or?
I'll make the motion to have the ARPA committee have a final review of the fund project list.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Can we make sure that somebody from the Board of Finance is definitely there?
Tracy was at a lot of those.
Yeah, because we have some questions. We have to make sure there's funding from the town for whatever.
Yeah, they did discuss a bit of that, especially when it came to the replacement of engine five, and it looks like that should work. In fact, Tracy thought that was a good amount to put towards engine five.
I just want to make sure that they're on board with it.
Is it, is it possible to make some comments?
Do as far as the ARPA.
Yeah, I mean, ARPA.
Okay, from the floor.
Sure. I think your idea of going back to committee is a good idea. But let me tell you why I'm here today, because I went to the forum, and my understanding of the forum was that that was going to be a explanation of how the committee arrived at the recommendations they did. And then I read in the newspaper, there was a meeting tonight of the selectmen to look at those recommendations, and it had the sound that it was going to be the selectmen that were going to be deciding on which of the recommendations were going to be approved for the grant. The reason I came here is, is I think that list is terrible, absolutely terrible. And, and I'll say that, and, and look, I know a lot of the people on the committee, they're good people, they worked hard, I understand that. But you look at that list, you look at the fire department, you look at the mini excavator, and you look at the land we're buying, that's what, 580,000 or so? That's 78% of the funds right there. Now, what buying that land down there has got to do with COVID is absolutely beyond me. I thought this was a kind of a COVID-inspired kind of stuff there. It's, you know, they do trillions of dollars down there in Washington DC, kind of throw it up against the wall, hope some of it sticks. I think that's what kind of this funding is. I don't see how that's got anything at all to do with COVID. Now, I do think that it's probably important, and I do think the town probably has got to buy it. I'm not sure they got to buy it through the COVID.
Well, do you remember at the ARPA forum, it was explained why that was important, the affordable housing? And if you read the final rule from the Treasury Department, it kind of explains that you need to hit those most communities most impacted by the pandemic.
Say the last part again?
Need to help the communities most impacted by the pandemic, which are, could be people that require affordable housing. I would suggest to go back and really look at the final rule from the Treasury Department.
And I'm not going to argue with you on that, but what I'm going to say that there, and also a lot of that stuff on that list, and that was mentioned in the forum, really could go through a town budget, could go through the Board of Finance, could be voted on that way. There are some things on there that can't go through that. Certainly the, what was it? Worst friends and neighbors doesn't appear there. Historical Society doesn't appear there. I think the library does, but there are some kind of neat things that, that they're trying to do, and, and I think a lot of that was kind of COVID-inspired. Again, I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just saying that I think, for example, and, and the historical society, we came out on the short end of that. Look how far down the list we are. We're just above last. So no value whatsoever. And, and we were impacted by COVID. We were trying to reorganize ourselves and get going again. Right during COVID, we would sit up there outside in front of that doggone building freezing our butts off, trying to have a meeting, and, and good lord, that was an awful time to get going again. Friends and families, I got met when I came to the forum. I'm saying to myself, we, we don't need two food pantries here in the town. Well, we do. Because they talked about a clientele that they're serving that absolutely needs to be served, and I've got to presume that some of the reason for that service is, is the, is the COVID. And what happened with COVID is destruction that brought on, on everything. So I, 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 I think that's good that you're going back to the, to the committee. I would hope that this would be a meeting that would be as well-publicized as that last one was, so that in fact, we can go there and, and make some comments. And if I'm sounding a little bit angry, I am, and, and I'm going to apologize by saying I'm an old man, and my filters are gone, so I don't feel like messing around with choosing real careful words, I was going to tell you. So I agree to go back to that committee. If any, that's kind of interesting is what the final step is going to be. I guess that's got to be figured out too, and you're right, you see it all over the place. And I would hope that if that committee does meet, that we, we would be able to go to that meeting and be able to participate with commentary.
Yes, Mark.
I'd just like to say that I agree with Ed, and as far as worst friends and neighbors goes, $35,000, I believe it was, was given to the food pantry for the town. Wasn't it? You bought shares? 3,500, I'm sorry. And we do the same thing across the street through the church, feeding people every month. We feed approximately 50 people every month. And the way we feed these people is through contributions. So again, we are just as important to feed people across the street as you are here.
Okay. Anyone else?
I think I said at the meeting last week, or whenever it was, the town takes care of non-perishable items except for these food shares, whereas every month, all we do is perishable items. We supply meat, chicken, fish, hamburger, vegetables, butter, milk, cheese, you know, all the things that are very important and very expensive. And it costs us a lot of money every month to try and feed these 50 people, plus, like I mentioned to the, the little kids at James Morris. You know, we've been doing that for seven years, I think, and 15 is, we've had 19, 20. We had 18 at the beginning of the year. I don't know if somebody moved out of town or what, but we're down to 15 now. But still, that costs us a fortune every week to, to try and take care of those little kids too. So I'm going to come, hopefully come to the meeting if I hear about it and, and express that same thing. But I think this is a nice opportunity for the, for the historical society, the library, friends and neighbors to try and put a little money in their coffers so that they'll be able to continue to support these people in the best ways they can.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all. I, I just want to make it clear that the committee did look at everything. We really looked at the guidance from the Treasury and how to kind of serve the most people, make the most impact with the funds available. And that's kind of what they went with as they judged the list. I tell you what, there's a lot of things below 11 here I'd like to see done, and that was in favor of. They're not up on top. There's a good group of people, good broad section of people from our town that kind of went through this, but I think we'll just go back to another committee meeting and let people talk again and explain themselves and what the projects mean to their town.
Could you email Eagles? You talk about some final items.
I could. It's a document. I mean, if you go online. Department of Treasury.
Treasury.
Department of Treasury. That'd be the final rule. They had an interim rule for quite a while. They finally came up with the final rule. I might feel the finance, kind of a condensed version of that too.
I think it's a tough thing. My, my suggestion was number 12, and it's hard. I give the committee a lot of credit for being so thoughtful about it. We can't pay every single one. So, but I would think that having them review it and hearing final arguments, I guess, would be probably the best step.
Could I make a question?
No. I'm not.
That's true. If we ever get in this situation again, that you set a limit as to how much you can apply for, and then you make sure that everybody on the list, if they qualify, if it's within the realms of the document, will get a little something. I think you make everybody here. And then, you know, the lion's share goes to whoever you feel that goes to.
Some kindergarten teacher, and yeah.
Rob, is it, is it okay if I speak? Sure. Ed, did you have monetary figures for what? Well, I mean, to break it up more or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Um, Rob Ebbener, chief of the Morris Fire Company. The committee worked hard to come up with this list. If you bounce it back to the committee again, they come out with another list, right? They present another list of how the money should be broken down. What about those people that don't get it again? Are we going to bring it back to the selectmen, bring it and send it back to the committee for another list? How long is this going to go on for?
Yeah.
I guess it would go. We're, we're kind of under a time constraint too, a little bit. We are up for $200,000 for Morris Fire Company towards a new fire engine. A year from now, those prices are going to change. It's going to go up by 20%. All right. Right now, we're looking at a fire engine for about $700,000. Okay. Next year, it's going to be 20% more. It's going to be $840,000. Okay. Year after that, it's going to be over a million. Okay. How many times can we kick this back to the committee?
So Rob, it was, I, I don't know if you heard, it was my idea to bring it back to the committee or to send it back to the committee, and I said that because people are here asking for changes to that list. We weren't the group that put together the list. I wasn't, I went to one of those meetings, so it was conflict with work. I could not come. I'm not comfortable making changes to that list at all, truthfully, because I think that they've done their due diligence. But I'm not comfortable defending their list because I wasn't there. I think the same group of people should defend it or not. I, I honestly, I think everybody's got a case for their, their particular cause. I don't foresee them making many changes.
Oh, yeah. But we also had a town hearing.
Yep.
That was your time to, to state, which you did, didn't state your. So you wanted.
And, and, and I think after the town hearing, because Boris Lachman, again, didn't do this list, I think the committee should just meet and take in the feedback from the hearing. There has to be some follow-up to that hearing, in my opinion. Otherwise, what's the purpose of it? It's the same as like a zoning meeting or whatever. You have a hearing and then the committee meets. Again, I don't, I don't foresee there being drastic changes to that, and I, I think it could happen quickly. But I don't think we're talking about months. I think, you know.
I think it has to happen fairly quickly.
Yeah. I may have made a mistake then, because I viewed that as a forum where we were going to be told the process that they went through and, and to officially present the group of, whatever, 25 or 26, and to say it was the top 11 that are going to be funded, plus $100,000 for the excavator. So, so as I sat there that night, I, I figured that what I was doing was learning what had happened and what the recommendations are going to be, and then it goes to the Board of Selectmen, and, and that's where some decisions are going to be made. Now, if you decide to have a different way of doing that's fine, but I sure didn't go to that forum trying to think that I was going to be arguing for, on behalf of the historical society, not at all.
Anyone else?
It just feels to me like, you know, I can certainly understand the concern about what's going on and on and on, and how many times you want to go back to it. At the same time, it sounds as if there may have been a little bit of confusion about actually where the decisions were going to get made and how heavily the recommendations were going to be relied on. And it feels to me as if, you know, one more time around, especially if it could be done within the next couple of weeks, doesn't really delay the process so that it's going to cause permanent damage to anybody, and it would at least give people a real sense that they've been heard, and I think that's important in situations like this.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, people haven't heard. They have had the opportunity to be heard. I think kind of we did explain the process of what happened with the ARPA committee. We made it clear who was on the board, who was on the committee, right in the beginning of the, or in the middle of the slideshow. We made it clear they made meth over the winter many times. Made it clear that they took all the different suggestions here. They made it clear, we put it on a list, and they looked at the list, and they came up with a rating system, and this is where it ended up. I think that was quite clear. After that, I didn't think we went into that forum stating that how we're going to move forward after that. And I think maybe that's the confusion, but it's a new process for everyone here. It's done differently in every municipality, pretty much. You just got to read the paper. You'll see that. So I think we did our due diligence. I, I do agree with Rob. I mean, like, how many times are you going to go back? I don't like that. I didn't get on the list. Darn it. We'll go back one time.
That's it.
That's, that's fair.
And you know what? There's, like I said, there's a lot of stuff here. I wish was above the number 11. It's not. What am I going to do? I'm going to agree with what the committee. What am I going to do? I'm going to agree with what the committee came up with because they looked at it, and they went with the Treasury ruling, decide which ones most benefited Morris. And there are other are other funding options for some of these, too, above number eleven and below number eleven. There was the CARES Act. There was a lot of money spent in the CARES Act, nonprofits, businesses, homeowners. A lot of money wasted in the CARES Act, too, of course. But there is a lot of opportunity for these different organizations to go after some of the funds put out by the federal government before the ARPA. I just want to make that clear. I I didn't think I sent the wrong message at the forum.
I don't think you sent the wrong message, but I do understand, like, there were some there were some like different intents there of arguing the case versus this is the final decision. So with that in mind, I I do some wrap up seems like it's necessary, and I I don't believe that's with this board.
Just one final touch, Tom. I don't think anybody's criticizing you or.
I'm not saying that. Just there's confusion. I thought I made things quite clear.
I think what we said before is true. It's a new process. People are trying to figure it out. I think inevitably it's it's going to be a little bit messy. And I don't I don't think anybody's to blame for that. But I also think if you go back, if you what you said you were going to do just a second ago, if you go back one more time, nobody can you know, being precipitous or be too fast or not. One more time, and it's done.
Yeah, I agree.
I think the board of selectmen, too, and I think we need to note that we were very deliberate in the selection of the ARPA committee to make sure that everybody was represented, and I think we did a good job of that. It was it was a diverse group, and they did put a lot of thought into this list, and I think that they deserve a lot of credit. It's difficult.
The only the only thing is, I want to go back. I want to make sure that we feel comfortable with the decision we make and that we address every organization that's asking for money. And maybe we overlook some of them. Maybe somebody, some of us didn't realize what these committees actually did. The fire truck, Rob. We have two hundred thousand here for a fire truck. I'm not questioning whether we should buy a fire truck or not. I think we should buy a fire truck. My question is to the Board of Finance, are they going to be able to fund the fire trucks? That's my question to them. So it's not a question of not giving you the money. It's a question, if we give you the money, are they going to be able to fund the rest of the fire truck? That's my question, because I don't want to vote on something and the Board of Finance say, we can't fund the truck. And we'll know Thursday night, because I guess they're going to discuss it. So I feel very comfortable going back one more time to the committee, reviewing everything and get input, because I think that's what we should do and feel good about it.
And I think if when the committee meets and they come up with a final decision, that's what we're going with.
That's what we'll go with, and then we have to decide whether we want to do a town meeting or the selectmen.
Okay, so did we make a motion to send that back to the ARPA committee? Did I make a motion? Okay.
Did I second?
We voted?
Yes, we vote. Yep. Okay, good.
Refunds and abatements.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ordinances. Three ordinances. One they worked on for quite a while was the dating wildlife. This one it goes to our town attorney, has not gone to DEP yet, because it wasn't quite in the proper form, and there was something missing about feeding birds, bird feeders certain times of the year. So that was added in. So we could bring this one to DEP if you wish.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to do that. Send it to DEP.
Excuse me, are those the three that we voted on?
This is what you sent me.
What is that, baiting?
Baiting of wildlife.
I think we voted on that on the Saturday meeting, which you said we had to go back and vote on again because.
So you don't want any action on any ordinance?
According to you, we couldn't. You couldn't, because we had to go back and vote on.
Was this voted on at the meeting? I don't know. Were there minutes?
To pass it on to you.
Oh, then let's wait. Well.
All those are.
Okay, we can still talk about it then.
We could still send it to DEP for review.
Send this to the.
Yeah.
It's a recommendation from the committee.
We can send it to we can decide to send it. Let's do that.
And.
DEP for review. Yep.
And we have the one prohibiting the use of cannabis on town property. We talked about this. I think it pretty much mirrors what them had done. Pretty much no smoking, vaping, ingestion of cannibal cannabis edible substance.
At the meeting, too, on Saturday?
Yeah, we talked about.
We can move on. It doesn't matter. Yeah, I'd like to move on it. Make a motion, move on it.
Next step is?
Just to make sure it's set with our council. It should be. Then go bring it. Got a second?
I'll second it, yes.
Then there's one ordinance prohibiting cannabis establishments as land use. And this is one I thought was going to be tackled by.
Which one is that, Tom?
Prohibiting cannabis establishments as land use, but it's a very broad definition of an establishment.
I don't have that one.
It's in the pocket. Second to the last.
Like to really get a clear idea of what this covers.
Yeah, I don't. Where did this come from?
It's the one that Bethlehem this isn't the one that Bethlehem put together.
I don't think this is.
When I received, I don't know. Maybe we should send that back to.
Yeah, I think.
Ordinance committee.
I don't really even understand it's.
Because it says establishment, then it goes on to define the establishments, producers, cultivators, micro cultivators.
I think they should go back to zoning or to this is what they were going to discuss with planning and zoning? Or no?
I thought they did. Did you, Maran, did you discuss this with planning and zoning?
Did this? Did this come from a discussion with planning and zoning?
Which one was that?
This prohibiting cannabis establishments as land use?
No, we're trying to set up a meeting between planning and zoning and the planner, Janelle.
I.
Joint meeting.
I would like to table this and fill that discussion because it's not.
That ordinance, did that come from the attorney, the town attorney?
I don't know. This, the one that you received?
I thought we received it with the other one about
As I sent you.
On town property.
I sent you a few that he had done in other towns.
Did Mike Ryback write that other one on town property?
I believe so.
It came through us through at the same time, so.
This is the one that Bethlehem voted on? Establishment, land use. I don't I it's been so long. I don't know if this is the one that Bethlehem used. But Mike Ryback wrote that one.
But Bethlehem doesn't have zoning.
That's why they did this.
I know. So why are we doing it? We have zoning.
Yeah, but it doesn't cover it. Doesn't.
I mean, it could.
It could, but they haven't even put a zoning in for the referendum that we passed in November.
I know, but that's a zoning issue, and this is a zoning issue. So why are we going to? Why are we making ordinances to eliminate zoning or supersede zoning? Our zoning commission isn't acting, and we need to push them to act. We don't. We don't.
If you read this, if you read this, this goes way beyond just the retail sale cannabis. This goes into cultivator, micro cultivator, retailer, hybrid retailer. I mean, that's that's far beyond what we vote on at the in the
It covers.
Town election.
No, no, this is a different ordinance. The town election was the
Yes.
Establishment.
Yes, so why is this coming, too?
Because we couldn't put cultivation on the referendum.
But this, I mean, it's as land use, it's it's a land use matter. It's not an ordinance matter. And as somebody who sat on planning and zoning for a long time, I would hope that it wasn't just wasting time there crafting the regulations to have ordinances.
Yeah, they do that in Bethlehem because they don't have zoning.
Well, if you open up our zoning book, there's nothing on cultivation of.
Which is what they're working on.
Why would there be? It's new. So there isn't, but that doesn't mean that's not where it belongs. There's no ordinances against cultivation either. So why are we putting this in the wrong place? This is an ordinance.
I'll go to planning and zoning.
You should. That's where it belongs. That's a zone. It's an ordinance that shouldn't even be discussing it. It's not under their purview at all.
There's no argument from us.
Yeah, it's not. It's just not. And it can't be enforced as an ordinance. So what is the point? It's a land use. So I'm going to make a motion that we reject this ordinance before a selectman.
Or send back to, well, I guess the ordinance would not be for, it wouldn't be an ordinance, so go back to land use.
We're just we're rejected because it's not in the right place.
So I think there's got to be a lot of research done where you flat out say you don't want these other types of activities in town.
Can I just say, we did discuss at the meeting that, and I think you saw that, I sent you the email about it. For this ordinance, going forward, we suggested that you have a a meeting with the attorney there to answer any questions that the public may have, because we thought this was going to be a big issue.
This one?
Yeah.
That's where you'd have the hearings.
A public hearing to change or amend the regulations. So I made a motion to reject it. Can I make a motion to reject this incentive to planning and zoning for discussion?
Sure.
And I'll second. All those in favor?
I would hate to see, and I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, cannabis in general in Morris right now, but I an ordinance or land use regulation prohibiting it before we have all the facts, I think is really kind of foolish on our behalf. I think a a moratorium for a specified time period would be more appropriate. Six months for to gather the facts, a year to gather the facts, and then reevaluate, but to write a regulation or an ordinance prohibiting something at this point is premature, I think.
You're exactly right. And I went to planning and zoning, and I asked them for a moratorium, and they haven't done anything with it.
Agreed.
With it. So what's going to happen?
They should. I I don't know zoning that well. I mean, you'd think they'd kind of move forward on two fronts. One would be what the town voted on. Right.
That would be the the.
Retail sales, retail sales of cannabis products. The second would be discussion on the whole rest of that, you know?
Just put a six month moratorium on them.
Yeah.
Because what's going to happen is somebody's going to come in and put an application in, and planning and zoning has to address it.
And somebody's got that right, and
Of course.
And I I I don't think we have a a planning and zoning commission that's very equipped to deal with this.
If you listen to planning and zoning speak, and I won't go into details, but on one one hand, they're saying we want to preserve the farmland in Morris. On the other hand, they're saying, we're not worried about cannabis growing in Morris. Where's that cannabis going to be grown? It's going to be grown on farmland, so it's not going to be farmland anymore. Because it's not it's not under the act. It's not.
This is where we need to gather facts, because you know what? You could say that's preserving, not going to be preserving farmland, but it it can be argued that it's preserving open space.
Well, it's going to be commercial greenhouses.
But it's not all greenhouses.
Be open grow.
No, a hundred percent it is not. I did the research. It's not all greenhouses. They're doing outdoor grows, so.
For cannabis?
Yes, and so this is what I'm saying about the facts. We can't say moratorium until we have, we can't say, you know, regulation until we have the facts. We don't have.
I'll do a little research on that.
I think if the if the zoning is serious about gathering facts, that they should be writing some people in who know more than any one of the three of us, because we certainly don't.
And there was a there's a farm, I guess it's a company up in Sheffield. I can't remember their name. They did come in and they talked about what they're doing in Sheffield and how it impacts the community, how it doesn't impact the community. They're looking to expand into Connecticut, and I think Morris is on their list for whatever reason. And they would like for people to go up and see what their operation is up in Sheffield. I did send it out that out to Tony, to David Wig. There may be other interested people that.
I'd like to go.
Go up there, yeah.
Well, planning and zoning, in my opinion, humble opinion, would be very foolish not to take them up on that offer and get as much information as they can, because I think.
Because I'd like I'd like to be convinced that it doesn't impact the town.
I think that there it is impacting the town up there. Their mill rate was cut in half.
Yeah, they're seeing different benefits. There's someone had a conversation with a police chief in Sheffield, and his only negative of the whole operation in town, I think there's several up there.
Oh, yeah.
Was the look of some of the fencing around the grow areas. He said, other than that, there hasn't been from law enforcement.
Oh, no.
Nothing.
I I don't think that would impact law enforcement. I mean.
So if it's not impacting law enforcement and it's outdoor grow operation and it's cutting down potentially the tax base or the taxes, then I I don't know why we would be in such a hurry to put a regulation saying no. You know?
I'd have to check on the outdoor grow, because everything I was told, it has to be under the under greenhouses. The only thing grown outside is hemp, and Bethlehem, I believe, has a hemp, one or two hemp farms down there.
We'll have to get, like I said, they'll gather information. We can gather some information, too. I'll let you know when it would be open for visitors.
Sure, Sheffield, I had to go up and.
I think it'd be very interesting.
Maybe our board should take a field trip.
Yeah. Sid, rent a VW microbus, head north.
Yeah, okay.
No appointments. Correspondence, public comment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
At five seventeen.
Thank you.